Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 7th, 2024 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy and delighted to have each of you with us this evening. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Paris?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the July 3rd, 2024 City Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strickland and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. This time, I guess we will move on to our agenda. Approval. There are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we were requesting that there was request for eight C to be continued until the first meeting in September. That item is the First Step Shelter, Inc. lease renewal agreement, or if you would like for it to be discussed, to be moved to administrative items and not on the consent agenda. That request that came in during discussion, so I needed to bring it to you all to determine if you wanted to continue the item or pull from consent for discussion.
I'd rather pull it for discussion personally. I don't, I mean, so...
So we'll move it to administrative items?
Yeah.
Okay. So move to...
Let's move to administrative items, that's eight C.
Move eight K to public hearings.
And we're adding to the consent, a $5,000 contribution to No Longer Fatherless from Commissioner Paris.
Yes. Please.
May I add $5,000 to the Bethune-Cookman football team, please?
Commissioner Henry is adding $5,000 to the Bethune-Cookman University football program out of your ARPA funds?
Yes, please. And 1,500 for the Daytona Beach Pop Warner.
1,500 from ARPA funds from Commissioner Henry for the Pop Warner football.
And I don't see the other ones that were supposed to be in here. The Early Learning Coalition?
I don't remember that.
Not on here. Could you add $1,000 for the Early Learning Coalition for their literacy program, please?
Yep. You got it.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Beach, could you repeat the first one?
Commissioner Paris, it is the No Longer Fatherless program of a $5,000 contribution. We have, the nonprofit information has been provided from Commissioner Paris that we will validate to make sure we move it forward.
I would like to do $5,000 to the No Longer Fatherless program as well, and 5,000 to BCU football.
Latice just got back on vacation.
Y'all make me work.
Okay, and likewise for the BCU football.
At what amount?
5,000.
5,000.
In fact, 7,500 for me, since I'm...
Okay. I can do that?
All right.
Okay.
Are there any additional items? Seeing none. That concludes the...
Oh, and there was the 1,500 to the Bethune-Cookman for the Christopher Jones...
Scholarship. Wasn't that on that last sign? I think that was on that last sign.
Oh, it's on there.
It's on there. It's on there.
Thank you.
Where's Christopher Jones?
The scholarship program at the university.
To help children who run out of money stay in school.
So we have them all?
Yes.
All right. Those have been included to the consent agenda, removing the eight C, First Step Shelter to the administrative items, and moving eight K to the public hearings. Therefore, the, those are the corrections for the agenda.
I move to accept the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any questions? Do we have any comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be denoted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item six A is Award for Innovative Use of Technology to Serve the Public, presented to Hassan Razika, Chief Information Officer.
My name's Rob Beach, and I am the Vice President of the Florida Local Government Information Systems Association and Chief Technology Officer with the City of Cocoa. And I'm here tonight because the city of Daytona Beach has shown a very strong commitment to improving citizen engagement through the implementation of your virtual scheduling and meeting platform, as well as your mobile city hall. These platforms have allowed your citizens now to engage with your city's departments directly on their own terms. They can now schedule meetings with departments around the clock, as well as hold those meetings virtually, eliminating the need to have to come into city hall to conduct business. Not only has the city demonstrated this commitment to strengthening engagement, but they've also shown yourselves to be leaders and innovators in local government technology. So, the Florida Local Government Information Systems Association only awards our Technology Achievement Award once every two years. It's during the last year of our president's tenure. So tonight, it's actually my honor and privilege to be here to award the 2024 Florida Local Government Information Systems Association Technology Achievement Award to my friend and colleague, Hassan Razika, and the city of Daytona Beach.
Who's going to get a picture?
Hopefully it's an android.
Android.
Yeah. Can I see the award round? I'd like to take a photo of that when I post it.
And bring, let's bring both of those in.
Yeah. Move it around.
Might be the other side.
You know, he's usually...
Not analog stuff.
Yeah. Can I see the award round? I'd like to take a photo of that when I post it.
And bring, let's bring both of those in.
Yeah. Move it around.
Might be the other side.
You know, he's usually...
Not analog stuff.
Yeah. Analog stuff. That's great.
All right. Sorry about that.
It definitely is my privilege to be here and recognize the city for the efforts that the team has put together. This definitely has been a thought that we put together, and Charles and his team have been instrumental in trying to get the vision implemented. It actually started off with a dare with the city manager. So I tried to up him one. We, he requested something similar to a mobile city hall, and his vision was definitely something that got me not just thinking about it, but very excited. And as we always seem to compete on who's the most techie in the room, he definitely puts us all to shame, I'll tell you that. So we decided that we wanted to make sure we extend the virtual platform to our citizens and be able to meet with the departments, eliminating any of the issues or restrictions for them to come out to city hall. We've seen that work very well in proof of concepts with our mobile app going live and implementing that. We started seeing an increase of the use. Not only that, but we found that departments were very receptive to the technology, and we found many use cases, I believe mostly in the water utilities department, have been able to address a lot of questions from the public. So we look forward for an increased use of this to definitely showcase that the technology has worked. The recognition is absolutely something that I will forever cherish, and we look forward for more of these. So this is just a beginning, and obviously what everyone supports. We look to make Daytona Beach the hub of technology for Florida. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our second presentation tonight from the Volusia County Affordable Housing Plan, presented by Jessica Gao and Ann Evans, cop call.
As they come up, I would like to say, you know, that's what leadership is about. You have good staff members, and then you challenge them to do something, to implement something, to be creative, to use their professional gifts and skills in out-of-the-box sorts of ways, and then they do it. So commendation to you as well, Mr. Manager.
Good evening. My name is Ann Evans. I live in Daytona Beach. I am here as the current Vice President of the Volusia County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I am the past President of the AHAC for Volusia County, and I was President when this plan was an initiative of the committee and came to fruition. You know Jessica Gao, I don't have to introduce her. She is my partner in crime tonight to show you, to unveil our plan that we have. We also have tonight with us county staff Brad Birdall, who is the Volusia County Community Services Director, and Carmen Hall, the Director of Community Assistance. And they are here to support us. I don't need to go into what affordable housing is, everybody knows that. So that part of the presentation, we're going to just kind of glide right over. I want to tell you how the plan got started. As AHAC, we thought it might be a good idea to put a plan together to kind of guide us into how to create more affordable housing in the county. So we started it in 2020. Well, guess what? COVID hit us. So 2020, we just did webinars that year to kind of get people schooled up on what we were going to do. And then we had a housing summit in 2021. And I think a lot of you probably went to that housing summit. It was very well attended by people from all over the county. We then divided into three affinity groups, and each one of these affinity groups had residents of the city of Daytona Beach on there. I chaired a group on the community land trust, we had one on regulations, and then we had one on funding. So we came up with some ideas, and it was adopted, we got it put together, and it was presented to the county council, and it was adopted in July of 2022. This plan has been kind of a roadmap for not only AHAC, but for everything we do with affordable housing. We make sure that we're all on the same page. It helps us kind of, it just navigate through the system of affordable housing.
So I will take this one, and I'll start by saying this is proof that the county also has to deal with me. So thank you, guys. You guys know this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. This slide, just to start us off, is actually a copy of a city of Daytona Beach slide from the most recent workshop that you guys hosted. And I just want to kind of frame the issue of, you know, how do we get here? Ann noted kind of the timeframe that the county went through, the different factors that are at play, right? The shortage of affordable housing, rising home prices, the pandemic, the nationwide crisis, rent increasing faster than wage growth. So in 2020, the county started this process. I will say the city started an in-depth review around that same time and culminated in the needs analysis that was adopted by the City Commission in 2022. And I just want to re-highlight, because we'll tie it into some of the county initiatives, some of the numbers from that report. And so the staggering takeaway for me in that report, and we talked about it at the county level too, is that in the city of Daytona Beach, 55% of our housing was deemed functionally obsolete in that report. Over half of the housing just did not count in terms of the needs analysis, the products that we have on the market, and all of that. The city has 43% of their households that are cost burden, right? So they're paying more than that 30% of their income towards housing. That's lower than the county average, which is 60-something. But I think what we noted in that needs analysis, and what we've talked about in many discussions, is that the Daytona Beach area median income is about $10,000 to $20,000 lower than the actual AMI rate that we look at. And so we have a targeted need here in Daytona Beach that we need to address. That study ended with saying, you know, what's the plan moving forward? We need 188 units per year over the next eight years. To date, I just want to highlight, because we were talking with county staff as well about some of the successes we've had. Clyde Morris Landings, we've talked about, is 443 affordable units. You guys just approved Acruva, the senior affordable housing, that's 56 units. Home Spring Hope has about 20 to 30 homes in the pipeline for home ownership products. Madison Cove is the local government area opportunity loan you guys approved, that's 80 units senior. Project Delta is going to come before you guys shortly with the 10% workforce housing set aside. The Framework on Avenue project has 24 units. And that total is about 650 units over the past two years since that needs analysis, which is great progress. And we're building that kind of in in future projects, and all of these are just my projects that I can toss out and know about. You'll remember on the Sun Gate Industrial Project, we said if we are going to have an employment center, how do we build in workforce housing there too? So they've got about 300 units that could be set aside. So all of those kind of tie into the county look as well, because we all interact together. And so what the county has done in their approach is look at two different sectors for how we solve the affordability crisis. So as we go through with Anna and myself going through the key items that are in the plan, it'll be showing whether they meet the produce new affordable housing or preserve existing affordable housing. To me, a key for Daytona in looking at future partnerships is how do we preserve existing affordable housing? How do we reduce that 55% of functionally obsolete housing that the needs analysis said we can't count? We can count it, people live there, our residents live there. And how do we bring that up to par? And so the county approach looks at the spectrum of affordable housing, because we know it's a continuum. There's not a, you know, one shoe fits all solution. So there is supportive housing, so that's homeless housing, elderly housing, those with disabilities, that there's a need associated with that housing as well. Affordable rental housing, we've seen housing projects, rental vouchers, the city adopted the ordinance that says you can't discriminate in terms of rental income payments. And then homeownership, how do you get shared equity through a community land trust that Ann will touch on, down payment assistance, loans, all of that kind of structure, land donation. And so as we go through the key tenets of the county plan, we will touch on both of those topics as we go.
And the strategic focus for the county plan has 10 strategies. It sounds like a lot. Five of them deal with the comprehensive plan that Jessica's going to talk about, and I'm going to briefly talk about the other five strategies. As you'll see, they're pretty broad strategies that can apply anywhere. So I'm going to kind of tell you what the county's outlook on each one of them is and what we've done with it. The first one is to support an environment for community land trusts. This will do both, produce affordable housing and preserve it. The community land trust is a nonprofit that holds primarily donated land. Then they can build on that property a lot less, because they take the land cost out of it. So they can sell it a lot cheaper than anybody else, and, or they can rent it, whichever. There are a lot of community land trusts around this area. The beauty of the community land trust is the affordability is in perpetuity. Because if you buy one of these homes that's in the land trust, the profit on the sale is capped, so it remains affordable, and the land still remains with the land trust. So you're going to produce it, and it's going to stay affordable. So we liked that idea that it was self-sustaining, more or less. The county put out an RFP recently on, that to, similar as y'all had done with donated land, and received RFPs, and some of them are, we've had four responses, one from a community land trust. The community land trust, in our opinion, is a great example of a public-private partnership in affordable housing. Government can't do all of it. So if we can bring in the nonprofits to help with that, we can all, we'll make much better progress in that area. The other thing, next thing that we looked at was to maximize existing funding streams. Now, these are funds like ARPA, SHIP, Home, and CDBG. There was a one-time hurricane waiver with CDBG money, and the county purchased with that, from that waiver, two large lots that can be used later on for multifamily housing. What we found, and Jessica has touched on it, and you all have touched on it too, it is so much more cost-effective if we can keep somebody in their home. If we can rehab their home so they can stay there, it's much more cost-effective. And if you look at the senior population in this area, most of the seniors are asset-rich and cash poor. So we need to find every way we can to help them stay in their home. So one of the things that we did with some of the money to maximize it, we did an income sliding scale eligibility. And because we could use that wiggle room in eligibility, we were able to rehab and keep over 60 homeowners in their home. So that was a good thing. We had a waiting list that was cleared off with that, because we use that eligibility scale. Another way that we're very, the county's very proud of, it was a hybrid model to provide some gap funding to projects that had already been funded from another source. You know, sometimes those rental property projects can take up to three years to get developed. And sometimes they don't get quite enough money, so it might take them longer than that to get the money that they need. So what the county did was say, okay, we're going to maximize and put a maximum cost per unit, and made this RFP more competitive by doing that, and said, we will help you with funding to fill that gap if you'll promise to get it done in up to a year. So as a result, we're going to have 302 new affordable housing units in Volusia County. Some is supportive housing, some is in Orange City. The Orange City units will be for seniors. Unincorporated, Orange City will have a project, Deland will have a project, and Holly Hill will have a project for rentals for veterans. So we've tried very hard to maximize, we're very proud of this, because with this gap funding, we can take those projects that are shovel-ready, give them what they need, and get these units on the market and get them out there. Another strategy was to create an affordable housing trust fund. We are still trying to identify a sustainable funding source for it. You can see on this slide what other jurisdictions have used for their housing trust fund. We want to make sure that whatever we use does not come back with some unintended negative outcomes that we might not have thought about. So we're moving very slow on this. Within the next maybe three, I don't know what the timeframe will be, but we would like to explore, all over the nation, actually, how have they done this and kept it sustainable? And we know that the land trust is sustainable, that land is there all the time. But the community housing trust fund, we don't want to just keep putting money in it, and keep putting money in it, and keep putting money in it. We want to figure out some way that it can get, it can be self-sustaining. We hadn't figured that out yet, but we're working on it. We also want to create an environment supportive of new development. You're going to see an affordable housing dashboard that the county has done in real time, that's online. Jessica is going to show you that in a little bit. But that is a real good way for people to know what is affordable, what's going on in the county. We have annual updates to, for anybody and everybody on what's been going on. And we've tried to simplify the process with developers by having a simplified intake form and having a group to meet with the developers so that we can actually answer their questions before they get started. We collaborate. Next week, and I don't know if it's going to be next week, but there are three AHACs in the city. There's an AHAC in Deltona, one in the city of Daytona Beach, and the county. We are trying to get all, well, we've had one meeting with all of the AHACs together. And what came out of that was a smaller subcommittee of representatives from each of the three AHACs to get together and see where we have some common ground. What can we collaborate on? What can we recommend to our various governing bodies that represents a collaborative effort? So that's also in the works. We also have a good relationship with the Stenberg Center at the University of Florida, which I'm sure you know about, gives us all our good data. The other strategy, next strategy, is to the support of new state and federal funding. Just like everybody, we monitor those funding opportunities, and we develop those RFPs to maximize it. This, the gap financing that we just talked about, we leveraged $7.8 million, and in return, with $107 million. So it turned out that our return on investment was $1, made us $13.71. It's not bad at all. So we continue to look for those ways that we can look for new funding. The other one was that gap funding with the 302 affordable housing agency units that I had talked about earlier. We also try to look for grant money, one-time money, that we can help local developers when they want to do a project that may align with some of these strategies. You know, the strategies are intentionally broad, so they don't pin us down anywhere. So we think we're doing fair right now.
The next one is conference of plan changes. So the county has at this time adopted their conference of plan changes for affordable housing. They're working on implementing ordinances in their land development code. And so the key factors in those comp plan changes that came out of the housing summit and kind of the workshops after were to provide options for fee waivers, deferrals, and density bonuses, establish an affordable housing review team, as Ann noted, and a zoning overlay, which I'll get to in a moment, allow for reasonable administrative modifications, and clearly delineate support available to developers. And so the classic example I have of this, because it is one that checked all of the boxes and was a little bit of the proving ground, is Habitat for Humanity has their project right off of Flemish, so right on the boundary of Daytona, Legacy Woods. It's just over 40 units for homeownership through Habitat for Humanity. They went through the county's process right after this was adopted to create a custom zoning structure and affordable housing deed restriction, and kind of work out what the framework of this looks like going forward. I will say that their affordable housing declaration that we drafted for Habitat is now the standard that we use for the city for the Home Spring Hope projects as well. So you've got some collaboration on the private side. The key for the county in discussing the Legacy Woods project was how do you structure the ability for developers to come forward with an affordable housing project that protects the local government that's involved? And so fee deferrals. And that project, instead of having an impact fee waiver for affordable housing, which your code contemplates in some circumstances, they said we want this to remain affordable for 15 years, or 20? I know Donna pushed for longer. And if it is affordable for a certain timeframe, at the end of that period, we will waive the impact fee. But if at any point in that period it is no longer affordable, you pay back that impact fee, which Habitat really liked as a structure, because they are selling directly to a homeowner. It's not a community land trust where a nonprofit is maintaining ownership of it. And so we talk about upward mobility of our residents. If we have something that is affordable, and their circumstances change, they are able to elevate out, do we want to greatly restrict their ability to sell for a profit? And so in that circumstance, low risk to the county. If they sold for above an affordable rate, they got their impact fee back, there's no loss. But it allowed for the homeowners to have a little bit of flexibility. And we really worked through a lot of the structure of how does the county lean, make sure that it is above a mortgage, and subordination, and all of that. And so that framework now exists that can be used on other county projects, but also other local governments in Volusia County, which we really, really like. The overlay is something that was discussed in the workshops and summit to say that we all know at a base level, affordable housing should be near employment centers, hospitals, grocery stores. And when you lay all of those out, you can kind of get a radius that HUD has for ranking projects, but that we can have on a local level to say, this is where we have transit, this is where we have necessary services. I think a lot of those are going to end up in municipal boundaries, just because of how development operates typically. And so that resource, once developed by the county, which they're still working on, I think will be really good in terms of planning for future opportunities. Administrative modifications, it will not surprise you that I suggested that they allow 40% modification to any standard, they settled for 10. So we got a 10% modification there. The city has some structure as well in your 6.22 standards for some modifications of standards. I think we could expand those a little more, but happy to talk about that anytime. And then go through kind of a pathway on progress for people who are coming to the county and say, how do we develop affordable housing? So the... So the key is to remove barriers and help projects move forward.
So this has been our impact on the community in two years. 447 rental units produced, 374 rental units are planned. We've assisted 445 homeowners. So we have produced and preserved 1,266 units. We have $10 million invested. We have $11 million approved to use. So this impact is at a cost of $21 million total investment. The county is committed to solving the affordability crisis, as you are, as we all are. We know that there are a lot of tools in the toolbox that can be used, and some tools fit some places and some others. So we wanted to just give you an idea of what tools we were using. Over the past two years, four years, you can see what has been spent for producing new affordable housing. Now, the $80 million to preserve affordable housing, I have to tell you, a lot of that's COVID money. And a lot of that COVID money was used for emergency rental assistance. It was used during COVID to keep people in their homes. So that's where that 80 million, I know it looked a little skewed, but that's where that comes from. So in the past four years, we have, the county has committed and spent $88.8 million on to produce and preserve affordable housing.
These last two slides will be quick. This is a very fun technology piece, speaking of the last presentation, that the county put together. It's an affordable housing dashboard. You can scan that QR code and play around with it, or you can just Google Volusia County Affordable Housing Dashboard. It's a live application, and it has two sections. One is the dashboard itself, which highlights all of the affordable housing projects within the county of Volusia. It breaks it down by the amount expended, the total units, what those are set aside for, and you can click on certain projects and get additional details. The key of this is that these, the dashboard only shows projects that the Volusia County government is directly affiliated with. And so in Daytona Beach, you can see Clyde Morris Landings, because that's a joint partnership, but I think that's the only one on the list. Part of that is limited because Daytona administers a lot of funding itself because of its size. And so for down payment assistance and things like that, county recipients are shown on the dashboard, but the city of Daytona Beach might not be. It'd be fascinating to see a Daytona Beach version of this. And the second part of it is the strategy. So all of the strategies that Ann and I went over tonight are outlined on the website, and there's a color-coded progress bar that shows our year-one goals, year-two goals, year-three goals, and where we are in meeting those. So the dark blue is, we've met it, we're moving on to the next step, and it kind of goes from there. So really great resource, really fun to click around and see what other jurisdictions in the county have partnered on. And the last slide is just on potential collaboration opportunities. And so at the staff level, between the city and the county, there's a suggestion that we designate an Affordable Housing Point of Contact to facilitate that discussion and expedited review, align plans and develop common evaluation measures to demonstrate collective impacts, so we're not playing by two different rulebooks, explore combining funding sources for large projects that address the affordability crisis, and explore the possibility of joint solicitations for ancillary services like monitoring of affordability to bring down the cost to the local governments. So those are our main takeaways. And with that, we are done and happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
I just want, page seven. It talks about the, sorry about that. Page seven, I just wanted to know, it deals with the different jurisdictions that have been used. What is the tenor of the county commissioners based off of this report on these particular items? If you could give us any...
We haven't even brought that up yet because we're not, we're still exploring it. So we're not in a position, we don't think, to even bring it to the county commissioners at this point. We think we've got to do a lot more work on it. This is just some of the beginnings that we're... Wow.
Do you have any, I know that you guys work with the county. Do you have any feeling of, because I believe that this is a regional problem, honestly.
Oh, absolutely.
What are the other municipalities' appetite for?
We don't know. You're our first ones. So we're hoping to be able to say, hey, we've gone to the city of Daytona Beach, and we're all going to work together, and we're going to have one big plan that has this strategy, and here's what the county's doing, and here's what Daytona Beach is doing, here's what New Smyrna's doing. And hopefully, it'll all kind of mesh, and we can then look at this dashboard and be able to say, oh, that's in Daytona Beach, this is Ormond, and really show the progress that we're making, because we are doing really good things in affordable housing. But right now, we're kind of doing it in silos. So we would like to have it. It would be great if we could combine everything to...
Ms. Jessica, you said that on your sheet alone, we've done six, you've done 650 units in Daytona Beach, and those are proposed, right? Because some haven't come to fruition quite yet.
Correct.
But they're, they've been approved. And so Daytona Beach has done 50% roughly of your total 1,200. Is that right?
The total on the screen is only the county-affiliated projects. And so the overlap between the city and the county would be Clyde Morris Landing, so the 400. Beyond that, that 200 delta would not be reflected in the total.
Okay, but so we've done a good percentage.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So we are doing quite a bit. If that is your total and those are outnumbered, then we actually, Daytona Beach is doing quite a lot.
Yes, and remember, our numbers too is just what's been done in the past two years.
So is ours, right?
Okay. That's good. I mean, we know, we're all doing a good job. It's just, how can we do it better by working together? That's, that's the big thing, that we should be able to all sit down. We were hoping that when the Ahack groups get together, that maybe that might be one of the recommendations that come out of it, or maybe it comes out of, out of your commission meeting, you know? We are open to, and to working on it.
Well, I think the message from us would be, we're willing to work with anyone who's willing to work on this problem. Because, you know, I think our results kind of speak for themselves as...
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, you know, I don't, we can't do enough.
Yeah.
So let's just do all that we can, and let's work with whoever's willing to work.
Well, I think that's what, we're here to say the same thing. We're willing to sit down, and if we can all get together, imagine what we could do if we joined forces. We could maybe, maybe in the next two years, we could triple the numbers. And that would be, that should be probably our goal. But we're here. I'm here, I live here, so I'm, I'm happy to help.
We appreciate both of you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thank you. But you came to us first. We're not going to use in the count.
So we're going to move on to item number seven, which is our citizen comments. My first speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Fortunately, we don't get a chance to comment on the last one, but I would certainly hope that the city has a liaison czar, everybody likes to use that term, to work with a county group. And I think that, I think she requested that we have a center point of contact, and I think that's very, very important. I had a question on item 8D. It's not normal, from my experience, that we approve board members in the consent agenda. However, you know, I don't have an objection with this person, but it just seems that that's kind of sliding the board selections into where we wouldn't normally vote on there. So I'm just questioning why it's put in the consent agenda. On item 8I, I applaud the upgrades, nearly $200,000 in the audiovisual, but I didn't see anything for ADA improvements in that whole list of equipment. I went through it a couple of times, and I didn't see anything in there. So maybe I missed something, but I'm a little disappointed. Also, I know in the lobby area, a lot of times we have to sit out there, the audio is less than stellar, and I don't know if there's an ADA ability to, can be added on there, but I would like to see something added for that. On 8L, I applaud the city for putting stainless steel hardware on the list of equipment required. I hope that the city, of course, thoroughly inspects that. I've seen several of the harbor repairs and docks and stuff done with less than high quality. My experience in this particular area is long and deep, and I will say this, I would like to see us include the word certified hardware, because a lot of the hardware being flooded on the market today comes from overseas in Asia, and particularly China. And most of their product, I know in my previous career, we had to outlaw because it was inferior and did not meet standards and could easily break. Obviously, there's incentive for contractors to use the cheapest hardware they can find. That's why I would like to see you include the word certified stainless steel hardware on your billing contracts. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Three things, D, L, and, D, O, and L. One on D. Years ago, the commissioners, it was their responsibility to go out and get members of our boards, all right? Jim Chisholm changed it. There was a whole rigmarole of public involvement that he didn't want. So he changed it to, he would choose the board members. So we ended up having Betty Goodman in charge of who the board members were, and it would go to her, and then she would present it. And sometimes it'd be six months or late. I remember Frank Heckman was on the Main Street CRA board two and a half years after he was supposed to be replaced. She just never got around to finding somebody on beachside. She said, oh, well, there's nobody on beachside willing to work. I don't find that viable. But I'm asking you to think about going back to where it's your responsibility to find somebody who has your outlook so that you can be represented on these boards the way you would prefer that they be represented, rather than somebody else. Secondly, the concrete on the last CRA agenda, I would like to have that in all five CRA districts, that that same concept be used in Blue Road, downtown, South Atlantic, Main Street. Why limit it to just Midtown? If it's a good idea, then it's a good idea for all the CRAs. We've done that in the past. We pass things for one CRA, but not for the others. So I'm asking you to make that available to all the CRAs. And lastly, the marina? I was shocked. I was talking to somebody from the chamber, and I had mentioned that at one point, our marina was nationally recognized as either the first or second best marina on the East Coast. And he said, our marina? It was a time when our marina was the finest. It was absolutely great. Take a walk through it now, all right? It is not the greatest. It took us, what, five, 10 years to replace those awnings? They've been wanting these docks replaced for 10 years now. What hurricane was it? I can't remember the name of it, that caused the problems. It just never got fixed. The landscaping has to be worked on. There is a Daytona Boat Association that I've never seen, or I haven't seen, in the last three years, anybody going around. So there's an empty building sitting there. We've got an old Coast Guard building that's sitting there that we're now renovating. I think we need to look at our marina. It is a fantastic asset. We should not let it go bad. Thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
But okay, do we have any questions?
I do. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Item 8D, since I've been up here, I've been on four years, every board appointment that's on Zone Four, I've appointed, I've picked. So I just wanted to make clarification on that.
I know, I know. It was, it was one of those things. Say it again.
Johnism.
Yeah. Okay, yes, ma'am.
John, would you like to be on the Nuisance Abatement Board? Because I do actively ask people all the time, and I'm constantly asking people, and a lot of people just don't want to do it. So we are trying. I know I am, I know everyone else is also, so please don't think that we're not doing it, because we really are. And I just wanted to see if it was possible, the founder of No Longer Fatherless is here. I saw that he didn't fill out for the consent agenda, so I don't know if it's possible for me to ask him to come just...
How much money you gave him?
Excuse me?
How much money did you, did you give him?
$5,000.
Someone else give him money?
Yes, so did Ken.
Mr. Strickland.
It's a really good organization.
He must be worth something to the city. He's doing something, right? Doing something great, right? Who's the founder? You got to be doing some great work. Come on up here, brother. Yes, no doubt.
Good evening. My name is Skip Simmons, Executive Director and co-founder of No Longer Fatherless. I live at 543 Hamlet Drive in Port Orange. And I had a plan tonight, and you guys have derailed me. I've blown away at this donation and generosity. This is not a drop in the bucket for our organization. This is a huge donation for us, and it will go a long way toward impacting lives. So our mission is to recruit, train, and match mentors with boys growing up without a father figure, and that's in Volusia and Flagler. We're up to 70 mentors matched with 70 boys in the area, and 24 of those reside in Daytona Beach. We've also had many events in Daytona Beach. We were involved in Surf with a First Responder a couple of weeks ago. We have a business tour tomorrow off Ventress. We're going to be at the Police Department Backpack Giveaway on Friday. So we have three main programs. It's one-to-one weekly mentoring and life skill classes and group events. So I have the honor of mentoring a now man who just turned 18, just graduated high school. We were able to get his first vehicle donated for when he was 16. He's had three mentors over the past five years, and now I'm honored to mentor him. I was at his baptism several months ago. I was at all his weightlifting meets for high school. And since graduation, he showed interest in becoming a firefighter. So we scheduled a fire station tour for him to meet all the firefighters and see what it's like. And now he's enrolled at Daytona State to become a firefighter. So this is one of more than 70 testimonials we could go through. We are truly trying to change generations and build leaders in our community and business owners and fathers and husbands. So we are passionate about this, and we're growing more than ever. We've already trained more mentors this year than all of last year. So we're at about 25 so far this year, and we have another class starting in October. So we're hoping to get close to 40. That was our goal for the year. So we'll see if we can make that happen. And if there's any men out there in the Daytona Beach area watching online, or mothers in need of mentoring for their young man, they can check us out on our website, www.no-longerfatherless.org. You can sign up a young man for our program there or register to become a mentor. So I am just so appreciative and will gladly answer any questions you all have.
How long has your organization been in existence? Is this the first time I've ever heard of it?
Me too.
Yeah, we get that a lot. But we came up with the idea in 2016. We put everything together, you know, legally with our board and systems in 2017. We had our first class of mentors in 2018, and then I was able to start as an employee in 2019, and then battled COVID and every, along with everybody else. So we've really started gaining traction these past few years.
What are some of the financial...
What are some of the financial needs for the, for the organization?
Yeah, so we have, we host about 15 events per year for our mentors and boys that are always free of cost for everyone. We include all their families in several of those events. So some of these are, you know, over 100 people involved with food, and supplies, and venues. So that's, that's a huge cost for us. We also have, you know, salaries for a few employees, and liability insurance. We're going to be incorporating college scholarships for, for the boys as they graduate high school. And so there's definitely a lot of costs involved in running a nonprofit, and we're always undermanned and, and underfunded. But yeah, we are growing and doing our best to, to make it work.
Well, I love it. I thank you for what you're doing. I'm gonna give 2,500.
Oh, my gosh.
I wanna, this is, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
This is very well needed in the community. Very well. I had never heard of you. I gave in the beginning because I didn't know what the organization was, so I'm glad you came up and told us a little bit. I kinda gathered from the, from the name, but just wanted to hear more about it. And thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you guys so much. This is unbelievable.
And Commissioner is gonna match.
And I brought, I brought brochures, and some paperwork and information about the organization transparency, and our budget, and everything.
Give that to one of my staff members, the information about the, for the, for the donation, yep.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions?
Can I see the brochure now?
Am I allowed? I don't know.
Yes.
Am I gonna get tackled?
No, nobody's gonna get hurt.
I will say also that Stephen Tab with the Fire Department, the union back there in the back, they were part of the surfing with the first responders. You don't very often find union groups working in partnership with local groups or administration to try to do what's best for the community. But the relationship that Stephen and the union has, has been beneficial for not only us as an organization, but the whole first responder surfing program. So I see them back there. He doesn't talk too much, but he makes sure that they do things with the humans. So I just wanted to recognize him back here.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen. And Stephen and his group were also at the Pay It Forward slash Many, Many Organizations Backpack Giveaway on Saturday, doing their good work again. So we thank you for being there as well. And I saw this on Facebook, this, the surfing. I saw a video. And so I was then enthused about getting more information about it. So I'm glad to see this. And I would echo what Commissioner said. Few things are probably more important than this. A lot of things that are important. Now, when I was a much younger man, I ran a program at Daytona State while I was also working at Mainland. But I ran a program, which was a mentoring program for 40 boys. And the key that you're also adding is that component for scholarships, and you're sending a kid to, helping him to get into the Fire Academy.
Mm-hmm.
Because we believe in our society that the great equalizer is educational opportunities. So you train these young men up and get them to a point where they can graduate, and then you gotta find destinies for them. When I was at Daytona State, we had the fortune of each one of them, when they graduated, they were able to get a scholarship. So, you know, I have some now that have PhDs in all sorts of different professions that they're in. But it is the most important work that I have ever done in my entire life. So I commend you, and I applaud you, and you will hear from me as I learn a little bit more about what you're doing, so that I can properly figure out how I wanna support you.
Thank you.
But I also wanna support you in some other ways as it relates to partnerships. We're gonna have a Vince Carter Day here at the city. We wanna make sure that your young men are invited to that, so that they will have access. Because a large part of what you're doing is you're teaching them and exposing them to models of possibility.
Yeah.
Like the Fire Department. That's what you're saying to them, is that you can become this, you know? And what we're saying as a community is that we wanna say to our kids, that you can be Vince Carter. You don't have to have a 40-inch vertical. But there's a lot of other great things that he's done in what you're doing. So can't thank you enough, and you'll hear from me as well. Any other comments? Thank you for bringing him and having him to come up and speak to us.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Any other questions? Great job.
Thank you.
And while we're on this, I know a lot of times the community feels like, they look at this and they say, man, they just, when we were, because a large, a large part of the reason that these dollars were given was because the U.S. Conference of Mayors lobbied the Biden Administration for $65 billion. It was the U.S. Conference of Mayors, probably the number one lobbyist group behind the COVID funds. Well, one of the chief, chief, chief reasons that, or explanations that we were given, even from the president at the time, and his staff, but even as a group of mayors, was that we said that probably the, one of the best things that we could do was to give the funds to nonprofits like yours that are executing the work. So don't feel as though we're just like, feeling like it's just Christmas time. Because the, the money is going to the people who are, got the boots on the ground, and they're doing the work. The heavy lifting, that we can't, we can't do that lifting. You know, you're doing the lifting, and that's how you respond to the COVID crisis, is by doing the work to help the kids to get to the point where, and I'm gonna talk a little bit later, about what, some of the things that we've done to help us, our community, respond through education. So I just wanted to throw that out also. Okay.
We need a motion and a second for the consent.
Oh, yeah, okay. Do I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda?
We do.
No, we don't have one.
Second.
I have a motion from Zone Two Commissioner Strickland, and a second from Zone One Commissioner Paris. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings and quad judicial hearings. Item nine A is the City Manager's Office Charter Amendments. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of Daytona Beach, proposed amendments to the Charter of the City of Daytona Beach, proposing ballot titles, summaries, and text for the proposed amendments, providing directions to the city clerk, providing for codification and separability, providing for an effective date for the amendments if approved, and providing an effective date for this ordinance.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second.
And I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranby Avenue. My issue is the idea that you're going to commit me to paying a bond, and somebody who is not going to be paying this bond gets to make the choice. They get to vote. So if we're going to have a bond for X, Y, or Z, and it's going to be on the taxpayer, if you own a property, then those people who own the property should be the determining factor on whether the bond should pass or not. The idea that somebody else could make a commitment for me, for what I have to pay, doesn't make sense to me. So I understand landlords pay taxes, and the renters pay the landlord, but ultimately, the landlord doesn't make the vote. It is the renters. And they can up and go whenever they feel like it. They can rent for six months, a year, two years, but the bond goes for 30 years. They're saying that you, a property owner, must pay this bond, but I, as a renter, do not, because I have the option to leave. But those of us that own property don't have the option. So if, if, if we're gonna commit to paying a bond for 30 years, let's say it's 50 million, 60 million, whatever, we are taking it upon ourselves, knowing what it will do to our property and how much we must pay. Whereas a renter, college kids, they're allowed to vote, but they're only here for two years, four years, and then they go. So do they make the same commitment as a resident who owns property? So that's why I'm worried about taking this phrase out of the Charter. Thank you.
That was my only speaker. Mr. Mayor?
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah, just in case there's any questions.
Just in case there's any questions, he was referring to a provision of the Charter that currently provides that if there's a, a bond issue that you elect to have voted on, it can only be voted on by freeholders. So first off, there's already a provision in the state constitution that, for a bond issue that requires ad valorem taxes for repayment, it has the same language, so this provision's preempted anyway. But second of all, the requirement of freeholders, both in the state constitution and our charter, has been held unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court. It's something we're not enforcing now. It's a term that just causes confusion, so we might as well eliminate it. We can't require a vote of just freeholders.
Good job, your attorney. Anything else? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We moved item 8K to the public hearings. So this is Permits and Licensing Department Non-Ad Valorem Assessment for Collection of 2024 Demolition Costs. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution of the City of Daytona Beach, providing for the approval and adoption of non-ad valorem assessment roll for demolition costs and expenses, providing for certification of the assessment roll, providing for separability, providing for conflicting resolutions, and providing an effective date.
So, second.
Have a motion and a second.
And I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. No comments? Okay. All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We're gonna move on to item 10, which is our introduction of ordinances. Item 10A is a Growth Management Planning Department First Amendment to the Asfari LPGA PD rezoning. This is an introduction and ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Asfari LPGA Plan District Agreement to allow for additional permitted uses and clarify development criteria within the planned district, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment and providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
Yes. On 10A, I think I'm up.
I'm okay with everything in there, except one of the uses in there, because I actually talked to you.
And I do have Jessica Gal for questions.
I've talked to Jessica Cowell about this, is the hotel use. That's, it's, the property's not that big for a hotel, so.
Yes, and we did speak on it. Thank you. I, we have met or talked with the applicant about looking at that between first and second reading, modifying that to either reduce the footprint down to a boutique hotel kind of footprint. It's about three acres when you take out the Dunkin' site. So there is room there, and they've had some interest, but we are talking to them. We will either bring up a proposal or removal of that use. We're gonna discuss with them.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? The public hearing and final action will be August 21st. Moving on to 10B, it's a Growth Management Planning Department Second Amendment to the Caris Code Storage PD rezoning. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the Caris Plan District Agreement to clarify landscaping requirements within the planned district, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment and providing an effective date. Are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
No, so move? Second reading, isn't it?
No, it's first.
Oh, first, sorry.
I did have Ms. Cowell here for any questions about this item. And the public hearing and final action will be August 21st.
A first reading.
Moving on to 10C, it's a Growth Management Planning Department Proportionate Fair Share Process, LDC text amendment. This is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Article II and Article III of the Land Development Code to modify the approval process for proportionate share agreements, and to clarify city staff authority to review and approve specific, specific contracts, sorry, and instruments identified in the code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing an effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing and final action will be August 21st. Moving on to 8D, it's a Growth Management Planning Department Signage in Public Parks, LDC text amendment. 10D, this is an introduction of an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Article VI of the Land Development Code to exempt non-commercial informational signage installed by the city in city parks or in city properties or buildings, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. Are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? The public hearing and final action will be August 21st. So we're gonna move on now to item number 11, which is our administrative items. Item 11A is a Parks and Recreation Department Agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Flagler and Volusia Counties. This is a resolution. A resolution approving a written agreement with the Early Learning Coalition of Flagler and Volusia Counties, Inc., to bring its learning mobile to selected city community recreation centers at no cost for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2025, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, authorizing the city manager to approve changes to the learning mobile's location and schedule, waiving any fees related to the use of the city facilities, and providing an effective date. And they do have a presentation here for us tonight.
Thank you all for having me this evening. And I wanna thank Commissioner Henry for your generous donation to our literacy program. So we appreciate you. Thank you so much. The Early Learning Coalition of Flagler and Volusia County is a nonprofit organization that works to improve the lives of children by providing opportunities for families, educators, caregivers, and community partners. Our mission in a nutshell is to make sure that all children are ready for kindergarten. We, we have a childcare resource, Resurl, that's available to help families find quality childcare sources. Our school readiness program helps Flagler and Volusia income-eligible families in need with the costs of childcare. And our voluntary pre-kindergarten program is a free pre-kindergarten program for four to five-year-old children who reside in Florida. This helps prepare children for kindergarten as well, and families can sign up through our coalition. One of the various methods of outreach through the communities, partnering with the City of Daytona Parks and Recs, and the Early Learning Coalition, has recently renovated our Early Learning Mobile. Kindergarten readiness scores are around 50%, and we want to give all children the opportunity to be prepared for kindergarten. So the Learning Mobile will be able to provide some of those areas to help prepare them for kindergarten in this manner. The materials used will encourage development in all domains of children's learning, and the positive effects are just astounding. Some of the parks that we were looking at were Suburbia Playground, Henry Lee Park, and Lenox Park. And we would also like to create some collaborations for summer programs and special events with the rec centers, and that includes Dickerson Community Center, the YSG Cultural and Education Center, Snebley Recreation Center, Cherry Center, and Sunny Land Programs. And we wanna give Mr. Willis a huge thank you, because he's worked closely with us on this project, and we cannot thank you enough for your considerations. If there's any questions?
I don't understand what, I, I don't understand what, is there, is there a question? Why do we have to, why do we have to approve this? Why isn't this just something that we could just do?
Mayors, in order to, in order to do a license agreement, that requires city commission approval. Normally, in order to approve the use of city facilities, permits can be issued, and, and staff is required to assess specific permit fees for that. A license agreement allows some of those permit terms and conditions, including the fee amounts, to be amended. That requires your approval under the code.
Okay. And I'm not trying to get, skirt our responsibility, but what I'm trying to say is that your organization is unassailable. is that your organization is unassailable. Your work is what we should be a perpetual partner with. So that's all. I just want to make certain that the whole world knows that we believe in the work that you're doing. I cannot applaud you enough for what you do.
Thank you.
And we thank you for being in our community and doing the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I have been wanting this for years and years and years, a community bus that goes around and either gives children access to books or some kind of literacy program. I don't know if other people want it in their area, but I definitely wanted it in my area. So when you said Suburbia Park, I was one hundred and ten percent sold. I'm in, I'm bought in, and I'm gonna donate two thousand dollars to that, this literacy bus for it.
Thank you.
Please make sure it comes to Suburbia Park.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I had given a thousand for the other, for their regular literacy program, but this program is different, right, than the regular literacy program?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, yeah.
That's great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move to item eight. C was pulled from the consent agenda to the administrative item. This is a resolution approving the lease renewal agreement with First Step Shelter, Inc., for the operation and maintenance of the First Step Shelter facility for a five-year term commencing October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the renewal agreement and providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. I'm just wondering why we would, you know, I just want us to understand that, I don't know what's going on, because bottom line is, we don't want to run the shelter. I don't want to run the shelter from the city's position. We've invested a lot of money and a lot of energy into the shelter. The shelter has been way more successful than I ever imagined it could be. And I understand, and I spoke to this commission a few weeks back, and I understand, you know, that we're at a point where you're seeing some things that may be of some marginal concern, but it shouldn't be of a, too deep of a concern, because, one, we are the drivers of the shelter, the city of Daytona Beach, and we don't want to send a message, we've got seven, eight different municipalities who are now partners with the shelter. When we started, we had four or five cities that were partners, we're now up to seven, what is it, seven? One is out, so I think it's seven. So we don't want to send a message to them that now we getting cold feet. And we're trying to now renew with the county, which I've asked staff to draft a, something for the county, because they had a meeting on this week where they discussed this item, and they are waiting for something from us. So I'm not understanding, I don't think we need to be sending a different message, you know, and that's just where I stand. So, go ahead.
I'm not against approving a new lease. I just received numerous, numerous messages about approving a new lease until the issues that were in the paper were resolved, and was asked that we not, to just pull it off, just continue it to next month or to the next meeting.
And I received the same emails as Mr. Strickland. I'm not against this lease.
I'm not against the lease as well, but for transparency, I would like it moved to the next commission meeting, because I did talk to Mr. Gross, and he believes that we should have the outcome of that by then, am I correct?
I think you might have the outcome by the next meeting.
You might, okay. And we still have time to correct Mr. Future? We still have time with this lease to approve it?
I think the lease ends in October.
It ends October first.
Okay.
September thirtieth.
And like I said, I'm going to be voting yes on this, but for transparency and for my residents who have approached me as well as Mr. Strickland is saying, we would just like a move to the next commission meeting.
Okay. I don't want to fight with you guys, because we've had a, we've done, you guys have been a hundred percent behind the shelter, but I just want to make certain that we understand that we don't want to be the ones that start to get cold feet, you send a message to other folks.
And I'm not getting cold feet.
Well, you may not be, but when, once we
Correct.
Project a different message to different folks, I don't need Port Orange and Ormond Beach and everybody else getting cold feet, because then, I just want to remind us, the shelter's in Daytona Beach. And then if you don't have a first step shelter, operating a shelter, we did all that we could to build a board so that we were not the ones managing a shelter, you know, and so I just want us to remember that. Because then if there's no, no first step, then you got a building. You want a shelter?
No, I do not.
Okay. You know, I don't want one either, okay?
And I don't want one.
I'm okay with moving it to the next meeting, but I don't, I can't assure you that they will be done. And, you know, because I don't know that, that he'll be done.
Right.
So, okay.
Well, we had a motion from Commissioner May and second commissioner Paris. Do you want to amend that a motion to continue it too?
I'll amend my motion.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
All right, so we're on to commission comments. We're commission comments.
Okay, we're commission comments, Commissioner Reed? Oh, we went to the, ready, all right, Commissioner Paris?
So I thought Danny was going to be here, but this week, the aviation program that we donated to had their graduation, and they also had a guest speaker who was Captain Donnie Conquinn from the Blue Angels, which was really cool. But I didn't realize that the kids were going to actually go up in a plane and fly a plane. I thought it was just going to be a simulator. But I saw pictures and videos of these kids flying in the plane, and it was the most amazing thing. And some of them were so shy when you went to talk to them, but then you see videos of them flying a plane like experts. It was the coolest thing, so everyone that donated, thank you very much. I hope we could continue the program, figure out how to help him. And I wanted to thank also the fire department for partnering with, no longer fatherless, we were able to meet some of the children and also the mentors, which was a really nice thing. And I guess that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
I just wanted to say that Friday, weather permitting, we're supposed to have a summer, end of summer splash party at Dickerson Center, so kids are invited, community's invited, there'll be inflatables, there'll be games, there'll be free food, and come and enjoy the last days of summer. And I just want to add again that the fire department will be in full force, helping out the community and being very pleasant, and we really appreciate all of their efforts at a community level. Thank you so very much. So that will be on Friday, and it'll be at Dickerson Center. Time start will be early morning, right? So I'm looking over here, and we're looking at about ten AM to two PM, all right? Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Will you be there, Commissioner May?
I will be there. I won't be there till about ten thirty or so, but I'll be there, yes.
Commissioner Cantu?
Mine will be real quick. I just want to acknowledge National Purple Heart Day today, and we do have two new Purple Heart parking spaces at the Peabody Auditorium, as the one we have at City Hall, so we do have three of them now. And my last comment is, I am not against a homeless shelter, and as a city, I don't want to be running the homeless shelter. I just wanted to move it for transparency for my residents. So I will be voting yes, and that's about it.
Commissioner Henry?
Just two comments tonight, and that is, one, Commissioner Cantu and I are inviting everyone out on Friday at eight-thirty at the Daytona Municipal Stadium for our first drive-in movie night. And the movie is The Guardians?
The Guardians of the Galaxy.
Yeah. Either way, you sit here.
It's better than Barbie.
Um.
Y'all wanted Barbie.
So you can join us at eight-thirty PM. You can bring the children out, you're going to be able to drive in, and also, we're going to have an area where if you want to bring your chairs and sit up front, you'll be able to sit up front. So it is going to be an old-time drive-in theater. Popcorn is free. Drinks are gonna just be one dollar for drinks, candy, and hot dogs each, each item are one dollars. So we're just inviting you out before the children go back to school. It is going to be a great opportunity for you to just come out, let your hair down, relax, enjoy the night air, and have some fun with Commissioner Cantu and myself. And then, also, October is domestic violence month. And I know when we think of domestic violence, we don't think in terms of teenagers, but one in three teenager experiences domestic violence via their relationships, and that's sexual violence, that's physical violence, and that's verbal and emotional violence. I'm going to be teaming up with some of the mentor groups, football teams, and mainly teaming up with the Purple Princes Mentor Group to do a domestic violence event in October, so that parents can get signs of what they need to know to be looking out for domestic violence. Friends, coaches can look out for what they need, and children can understand the ramifications of domestic violence. Boys, and I'm not saying just boys, but whoever is doing the domestic violence will understand that it is serious and what can happen if they are accused or they go to jail for domestic violence. So we're going to be bringing that to you, we're going to be bringing all kinds of great guest speakers in, survivors of domestic violence, officers that can talk to us. So just stay tuned for that to be coming in October, we'll be looking for some volunteers as well. And those are my two comments for the night, and thank you very much.
I forgot one thing. I would also hope that after the presentation that the county gave, that we definitely just don't let it fall aside, and we all try to do something to work with them.
They've been meeting with them.
So.
Yes, staff has been meeting with them. We do have a representative, Yolanda Presley is our representative. I think they've had a couple meetings that were canceled, but our staff's already, is actually working with the county's group.
Great, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share that there were a couple of mental health programs that took place since our last meeting. The one was the one by Medallion, Kiana Barneswell, at the Cherry Center. It was her third year doing that, and for those of you that just support that, I want to say thank you. It was very well attended, she had various agencies there, they explained to us, you know, the mental wellness, Commissioner Henry and I made donations as well as we spoke, or providing greetings and encouraging them to get the help that they may need. Then the other, Mr. Mayor is your vice mayor at this particular time, in that role, Mayor Nancy Miller of Daytona Beach Shores hosted a mental awareness program. You were in DC, and taking care of business. Was it in DC?
New York.
New York. And, and so she hosted this mental health luncheon, and I was able to represent our city for that. Commissioner May, I need you to consider partnering with me on a community program. Sylvester has come here several times and talked about what's going over, going on over on Fremont Sea Grave area, and I've spoken to the chief already, but recognizing that this is no longer my zone, but yours, but my heart is still there, I'd like to partner with you on a community program where those residents can come. I'm going to ask Reverend Harris if we may use his church, since it's right in the heart of things, and if we could have a meeting where they could share their experiences so that the chief can hear that and could perhaps adopt a plan on how to address that.
I think that would be wonderful to partner with. Also, I was hoping somebody, I was trying to call around to see if somebody maybe knows somebody who would like to start a maybe a watch program.
And that might come out of that.
That would be great.
Okay. So that was a public request, Mr. Attorney? All right. Da-dun-da-da. Wanted to also, wanted to also commend Danny Fuquay on the aviation program that we supported, and having met Mr. Cochran again, having been to Embry-Riddle several times, and he had some great video for the kids to see, the manager, Commissioner Strickland, and Commissioner Paris and I were there to support that final program. He had video that showed him actually in the cockpit, flying a plane, and then he also showed us their positions and how close the Blue Angels are when they fly. It was like within inches of their wingspan, and that was, woo, can't even imagine, and to be that high and to be that close and moving that fast. But it was really nice for the young people to see that in video and not just have to see a picture. Getting ready to return to school, integrity is about to open, so they have a tour on Friday for everyone to come out and see, a little tour. Also, the Highlands, don't forget, on April twentieth, two weeks from yesterday, is going to be a community meeting at the Museum of August, yeah, what did I say? April, it starts with A. On August twentieth, from seven to nine, we're going to actually tell you the story of the Highlands. You know, you see that big Coquina Arch thing on International Speedway, and you wonder, you know, is that just something we just put up for decor, to say we got Coquina Rock in Daytona? There's a history behind that. And so there's a banner up now advertising that it's the hundredth anniversary of that community, those residents living behind the arch, and we put up a permanent placard or marker to acknowledge the centennial celebration. So on August twentieth, from seven PM to nine PM, join us at the Museum of Arts and Sciences for some refreshments and to hear their stories, as well as some of the artifacts that they've preserved from having lived there for so long, will be on display. So there'll be a static display, light refreshments, and then there's a little program where some of them are going to share their story. So please come out, please come out. Midtown Concert on August seventeenth. We've been having some great groups out there, we've been dancing in the park, even in the rain at the last concert, so come on out and please participate in that as well. And then I want to also thank those of you that gave contributions this evening to the BCU football team. That concludes my comments.
Awesome. Okay, is that it? Okay, you all already have this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
I had a resident, not just somebody's daughter, we have to build a name after her mother. She's a local artist, quite well-known, her name, sorry?
It's a local artist, quite well-known, her name is Margaret Schnebley, and she's actually working with the Art League at the current time, just helping them promote some of their activities, but she will be having a solo exhibition on Sunday, August twenty-fifth, from one to four, that's open to the public. Something, if you think of the name Peggy Schnebley, that was her mother, and Peggy Schnebley worked for the city for thirty-five years. And so it's her daughter Margaret, who's an artist, she does huge paintings, they're quite well-known, and that will be a public display on August twenty-fifth from one to four, and she welcomes all of you to attend. And the Art League, it's right behind us, it's on Palmetto, it's a fantastic facility. They have classes, you don't know it's there because it's right in the community, but they offer so many great programs, so please go and check them out, they're on Palmetto. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Merrill Ether and the staff at the Schnebley Center for a great summer of activities, including the debate club, which the city manager, Commissioner Strickland, Commissioner Paris, myself, former deputy, former assistant city manager, Ms. Betty Goodman was also there. But they had a debate last Tuesday or Wednesday, and they debated whether we should do away with classroom teachers for computers. And it was a spirited and excellent debate, and the students just, they just, it blows my mind what they do and how they debate and the language that they use and that they learn. And then they also, maybe thirty of the students also published a book. So it was So it was, those programs were excellent, and just a lot of great projects and programs have gone on throughout the summer in our city. The mayor's literacy initiative partnered with Mr. and Mrs. Mentoring for a young man, Charles, who wrote a book, happened to have been a former student of mine. He did a sort of a book study of his book and what life was like for him growing up as a young man, not so much solely based on our community, but just life, and a lot of it was sort of a biography. So, but he was able to show the young men that you can navigate the complexities of growing up if you just work your way through problems. That you don't have any problem that is so overwhelming that if you don't work with adults and convince yourself that you can get through the problems, that you can. And then he showed them, you know, his life, he had gone on from being, you know, he was the, won the highest award in the Marines, basically, where he was a Marine of the Year, I think it was. And right here from Daytona Beach. And so it was just a great session for our young people. The mayor's fitness boot camp, math, fitness boot camp, which was sponsored, remember, by the U.S. Beverages Association, has pretty much concluded most of its work. We believe we will have some funds where we'll be able to go out and maybe do some work in another Boys and Girls Program, and maybe a school. But this summer, we serviced over 1,000 kids, were exposed to the program, and you guys will remember, some years ago, we piloted this program at YSG, and we were able to do maybe 30 or 40 kids for a couple weeks. This summer, we trained six students from Bethune-Cookman who had full internships, paid internships, and they, along with Dr. Henry, were able to execute the program in these settings, and where 1,000 kids were, as I said, gained access to the rigors of learning math through music, exercise, and dance, to try to stop that summerslide. So just a lot of great things, the project with Mr. Fuquay, who, from all accounts, was just, just beyond, beyond good. I couldn't describe how good one young man told me, told me about it, a young man who's, I'm his, actually, his father's, my godson, and he had such a great time, and it sort of helped to change his trajectory about what he's gonna do with his future. And so just what those young men came in and told us, happens. You begin to see the world in a way that you didn't know that you could see it. I have shared with you all, and I thought you all, you all have a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay. I want to use this to highlight some of the work that we do here in the community. Can you all show this on the screen by chance? Did they give you all a copy of this back there?
Yes, they've been giving it.
Okay. This is the Food Brings Hope Community Project, which is called, I don't know, maybe you all don't, just let me know if you have a copy. You may not, I think I emailed it. Oh, geez, okay. But this is the Food Brings Hope Community Change the Code Program at Mayland High School, was sponsored by my office in the literacy project. Change the Code Initiative really is a project that Farouk Husini brought a whole, a number of us together, maybe six years ago, to say that we want to work in the 3-2-1-1-4 ZIP code to figure out how we can help to reduce poverty in this ZIP code. And as most of us know, the ZIP code is one of the poorest ZIP codes in the state of Florida. 15%, top 15% of the poorest codes in the state. The Florida Chamber recognized that many of the children face challenges, and the schools in this particular ZIP code are none other than Turete Small Elementary, Palm Terrace Elementary, Campbell Middle School, and Mayland High School. So the Prosperity Initiative addresses, seeks to address where almost 42% of the children live in poverty. Through the Change the Code Program, they aim, we aim to significantly improve the lives and educational outcomes of high school students facing poverty who struggle to meet graduation requirements. The program focuses on students who are at risk of graduating, so what they have to do to graduate, you have to pass one of three tests, ACT, SAT, or CLT, which is the state standardized test. You don't pass the state standardized test, you can alternatively take the SAT or the ACT. If you pass one of those, then you'll meet the requirements for graduation. What we have learned, and what I learned years ago through the program that I ran at Daytona State, is that a lot of times, students can pass either the ACT or the SAT if they're given additional training, techniques, strategies, that a lot of times, people who are more resourceful are able to give their children, which gives them a leg up, and they get better scores a lot of times on the SAT and ACT. So what they've done with the Change the Code Program is provide curriculum materials and tutoring for the students. The data is nothing short of amazing. Indicates that in January 2022, the program has significantly contributed to increasing graduation rates among at-risk students across the classes of 2022, 2023, and 2024. 2022, 18 of 26 CTC participants graduated. 18 of 26, which beat the standard that they hoped that they would meet. 2023, the program expanded to 40 students. All 40 students graduated. Despite 239 students being at risk, in 2024, the data was even more amazing, 127 students who participated in this program graduated. The consistent graduation success of CTC students highlights the program's crucial role in supporting at-risk students to achieve their academic goals. The data highlights a significant increase in the involvement and impact of the Change the Code Program. So from 2022, only 4.84% of graduates received assistance. That went up in 2023 to 13%. Then in 2024, we saw a surge of 35%. So when you say 127 students graduated, that's all of them. All of the students that they worked with graduated. So to highlight these statistics, Mayland High School went from an 82% graduation rate in 2022 to a 91% graduation rate in 2023, and a 93.2% graduation rate in 2024. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that Mayland High School went from, in 2022, a C school, 2023, a C school, 2024, a B school. The investment of the city of Daytona Beach over that course of time was, through the mayor's literacy program, $20,158. You can't beat the return. You can't beat the return. Now, we didn't do all the work, the teachers, staff at Mayland High School did the work, but this program helped to fill in the gaps. And that's, when you see us as a commission supporting education, that's what we're doing. And so I'm saying all of that to say that I have agreed to partner with Mayland High School, well, not with Mayland High School, with the Change the Code Program through Food Brings Hope, to sponsor the program for 2024, 2025, to the tune of $17,870. When I tell you that Farouk Husini squeezes and gets every nickel of our money to be used for kids, because originally, the original $20,000 was for one year. She didn't take the $20,000 for one year and say, oh, I use it for one year, Mayor, can you, can you give us more? She used it over the scope of 18 months. She didn't come right back and say, look at these great numbers, can you give me more? She waited until she used every nickel of it, and then she came back and she said, could you give us more? When that lady shows up at my door, I will move heaven and earth to give her what she asked for. Because she moves heaven and earth to help children in this city and in 3-2-1-1-4. So I would like to request, Mr. Manager, that $17,870 of COVID funds be used to support the project for the 2024, 2025 season. And that's the reason that when folks show up, those are the people that we're partnering with, because they are doing the heavy lifting in our community. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments? Oh, yeah. The manager reminds me. We went to, the manager, myself, and Deputy City Manager Drew Driscoll, traveled to New York City a few weeks ago, and they walked me all over New York City, from one end to the other, and I didn't complain, but when I went, went back to the hotel room late at night, my feet were hurting. And we were not there partying, but we did have a good time just fellowship and getting to know each other outside of the boundaries of City Hall. It was a great trip, but it was also a very successful trip. We went to meet with the folks from the Jackie Robinson Foundation, and I didn't know what I would get. Now, it was a good meeting and a good trip because all I had to do was show up and talk. I didn't have to think about where we were going or what we were doing, I just went where they told me to go. And when we got there, Drew laid out the, and Drew is a student and a scholar, he knew his business, he knew Jackie Robinson. So what we, the reason that we went, we went because we, y'all know that we want to, as a part of the new stadium, we want to have a Jackie Robinson museum. But we want to have a great museum. So when you want to do something great, what do you do? You go to the people who do that well. The Jackie Robinson Museum is Grade A. The foundation is among one of the very best in the world. We toured the museum, then we met with the executive director and the deputy executive director of the foundation. And our ask of them is that you will basically take our museum and show us how to make it great, and essentially do the heavy lifting because you are the experts. The meeting was well-received, and we believe that we are in the process of working towards what we hope will be a partnership with their foundation to either have us to be a satellite or have them to, in some way, execute ours as a satellite through their office. But the chief objective is that we want to do the legacy of Jackie Robinson proud in Daytona Beach, just as he did our community proud by breaking the color barrier here in Daytona Beach in 1946. So we don't just want a museum that just says, you put something up, and you, you know, you said you had a museum. We want it to reflect his legacy and Rachel Robinson's work. And I don't want to begrudge other people, but I can't think of anyone who's done any more with their husband's legacy than she's done with Jackie Robinson's legacy. She has given him to the world, and as you see, '42 is now a symbol of progress, and the life that Jackie Robinson led was not just about baseball. You know, I refer to him, and I refer to Daytona Beach, and you know, we get into it when you go to these mayor's conferences because, of course, Little Rock claims to be the birthplace of the civil rights movement. Of course, Montgomery claims to be the birthplace of the civil rights movement. But before Little Rock, before Montgomery, Jackie Robinson integrated baseball right here. And so I claim that Daytona Beach is the birthplace of the modern civil rights movement. And when I said that, the executive director said, Mayor, you're on to something. Because Martin Luther King Jr. himself said, and I am familiar with the speech, he told Jackie Robinson, that I would not be able to do the work that I do if it were not for what you did. This work stands on your shoulders. So we have to, as a community, feed the legacy. Mary McLeod Bethune said, we're the heirs and custodians of a great legacy. And that island, ladies and gentlemen, is rapidly becoming the hub of not only our cultural center, but our moral, the location of our moral rudder, where we, as a community, can gain shape to say that this is our rudder when we're, when we're lost, when we're, and this is what I said to the folks at the, at the museum, when we're lost, when we're wayward, when we need inspiration, we can go to the island. And there's almost anything you need right over there at that island, whether it's in Jackie, or whether it's in Mary, or whether it's in the esplanade, whatever we need is at the island as a community. And then we also met with the folks from Major League Baseball, where we met with the Deputy Director of Major League Baseball, Deputy Commissioner, as well as the, the General Counsel, but also the Director of Minor League Baseball. And we made a pitch to them to, you know, once the stadium construction is complete, each year they have a Major League Baseball game that is played in a location that reflects and pays homage to the Negro Leagues. This year it was in Birmingham. We would like for them to host that game in Daytona Beach. So, and they certainly heard us, and let us know that they heard us, and, you know, a good friend of mine who works for Major League Baseball reminded us that he was there as a part of the meetings, he would keep this in their ear. And so hopefully, someday, the ballpark will maybe host a Major League Baseball game. But it was a great trip, very productive. Thank you, gentlemen. And Drew, you just did an outstanding job, and Mr. Manager did a good job, just in general, just amazing. Thank you. Anything else? Did I miss anything?
Nope, I think you did well. I will say that it wasn't me making the mayor walk.
It was Drew making all of us walk. But we were told before the mayor got on the plane for him not to wear his red tie, so he didn't wear a red tie the whole time. But it was a very good trip, and I think it will pay dividends to this community. You all, at the next meeting, you may have received a letter from the Pace Center for Girls. They are transitioning from the property they have in Ormond Beach to a brand-new building. They're trying to raise about $6.5 million. They're going to each city requesting funding, a request of about $250,000. We're gonna be evaluating these opportunities because a lot of the young ladies do come from our area, so we're gonna evaluate if there are funds available, they're gonna They're going to be asking some of you all if you still have ARPA funds. But I wanted to put that before you because they're going to come to the next meeting. And I'll share information with you about the young ladies from our area, similar to the fatherhood program. And they came up. But they're asking for money from all local municipalities, about two fifty each for a six point five million dollar contribution. Their staff will be here at our next meeting. But we're going to try to share informations to see what is available through some of the programs that we have. That if there are beneficial, beneficial funds that are available, we'll present those to you all. But I wanted to make you aware that they're going to ask you for funds as well. And we'll provide all the information prior to that commission meeting for you all to be aware. So you can make a concerted effort to see if there is funding that you want to present to the Pace Center. And so that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. I neglected to remind you all of the backpack giveaway this Friday sponsored by the Police Department. It's going to be at the Daisy Stocking Park from five to nine. It's going to have free backpacks, free hot dogs and hamburgers, free school supplies. And Chief is expecting folks to come out. Daisy Stocking, Friday from five to nine.
Daisy, Daisy, all right.
Five, I'm sorry, five to seven.
Five to seven, okay.
Daisy Stocking Park on Mary McLeod Bethune.
Okay. That concludes our commission meeting in terms of this portion. At this time, we will hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
Our first speaker is Fred Brown and on deck is Skip Simpson, Simmons, excuse me.
Fred Brown, fifteen oh eight, Crystal Ridge, Daytona Beach. I'm going to preface my remarks, it was great to hear some really good news this evening. Skip's program is outstanding. But the thing that really, really made me feel good tonight was hearing about school grades going up. There's not a more important characteristic of a community than having good schools with high letters. I specifically raised my kids in A-grade schools, which I selected where I lived based on the school grades. And I would certainly like to see Daytona be a straight-A community. I often wonder, when I see five hundred and forty thousand dollars spent on a roof on a ninety-nine thousand dollar building over in the marina, what that money could have done to bring all the other schools up. So I applaud you, Mayor, on your program. It would be great to be, enlarge the program. And some of the monies that the city is spending perhaps could be spent more wisely on programs such as that, rather than some of the things we've spent them on. As a reminder, with all the good news about what's going on with City Island, we still have flooding issues. And we still have flooding issues, as I mentioned, outside of the Army Corps of Engineers study area. One of our commissioners here should be very aware of that. The flooding occurs just a couple of blocks from City Hall. I also watch right across from Drew's office. I'm watching the transformers at the Esplanade sinking into the ground. And I see flooding where the electrical is. We need to expand it. The city needs to get more involved in solving some of the problems that we have here in the local downtown area outside of the study area. It's all tied together. I know I've talked numerous times about the Dutch solution. And I really think that the city, county, state, and federal need to work together to truly make Daytona Beach the world's most famous beach and the most beautiful beach. And that, combined when you bring in groups to see our Jackie Robinson Stadium, is going to really make a shine. Money needs to be spent. I know John's talked about it numerous times on Beachside to fix up the hotels that we have over there and beautify the area. It's very, very important. Also, one of the things on Beachside that I found out recently in a county debate, the step access from the ban shell to the beach is a responsibility of the city of Daytona to replace. I know they fixed up the holes, but there's still no access down to the beach. I'd like to see the city taking an initiative there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Skip Simmons and on deck is Stephen Taff. Did you want to speak again?
I'll just say that since my last speech, that I've been texting our board and my family, my wife, our employees, and they are all just in shock and blown away. So, thank you again.
Our next speaker is Stephen Taff and on deck is Roberto Di Nicola.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager. Tough act to follow with the presentation and the gratuity of the Commissioners. But we originally came here today to tell you guys about the event that we participated in and had the opportunity to participate in. And that was surfing with the first responders. And we actually had twenty-eight off-duty firefighters participate, which is almost a third of the fire department, which the other third is on duty that day. So that's two-thirds of the department accounted for. Getting nervous. Anyways, so it was an awesome opportunity to do that. No Longer Fatherless and Every Kid Swims at the end of the event asked us to present Commissioner Strickland and Commissioner Paris with a thank you because they were actually there helping hand out hot dogs. We cooked over two hundred and fifty hot dogs. So it was wildly successful. We had a great time doing it. A lot of us are surfers and brought our families. And you saw the pictures of us out there in our red shirts and it was really, really good opportunity. So I wanted to give this, it's a signed flyer poster from the workers from No Longer Fatherless, Every Kid Swims, and some of the kids there. And I think there was approximately fifty kids that participated. So it was a really cool event. And we just want to extend our gratitude to the Commissioners and to all of you guys who generously made donations tonight, too. So, thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Roberto Di Nicola and on deck is John Nicholson.
Roberto Di Nicola, twenty twenty South Peninsula. So sports are good for cities. There is built-in camaraderie, fellowship, friends, tutoring, mentoring. All of that goes in the act of practicing sports together. And, but people need facilities in order to practice sports and facilities are lacking. More volleyball courts are needed, especially on City Island, where there are far four hundred members plus in the volleyball club. And they form long lines and they all share one court. And their chance to play is minimal because the just, the numbers don't add up. Also, I've been playing tennis on City Island since nineteen eighty-four. And I appreciate your comment about, you know, playing at the other place. But, you know, I've been playing tennis at City Island since nineteen eighty-four. And at one point, we had probably six to eight hundred people playing at City Island from various areas of this community. Because it's recreational and also Greater Volusia County League and USTA leagues. So the tennis players of this area just would like to have back the tennis courts that they had. You know, clay is a better surface. We have discovered that. They knew that in the twenties and thirties when they built the clay courts. But then they became hard courts. So we feel that there is the room. There is the FEMA money that, because of the destruction of hurricane destruction of the courts. And I think that may make sense. So that's it. Sports are good for the city. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Sylvester Peterson. He's not, okay.
John Nicholson, four thirteen North Grand Avenue. This morning at ten o'clock, the county had a revelation that we got a new airline coming into town. It's called Breeze and they'll have four routes starting immediately, well, they start in November. It's important that we, as a city, show up at these events. It's in our city. I know it's a county property, but it affects us. And not a single employee was at this event. Secondly, a couple of months ago, we vacated an alley behind a bunch of houses out in, was it Fairview Estates, the other one? And apparently there was a misunderstanding. There was a gentleman came before you and said, I want to make sure that you don't vacate the property behind me because it's needed to get to an electrical pole. Because what they were doing is they were coming through his property, destroying his property to get to the pole. And the two ladies on either side of a city-owned property had built sheds on city property, behind the city property, not on their own property. I did not understand what they were saying, that they wanted not only their property behind their house, but also the property in the city property as well. So again, like we did on the river, did we give away property that we shouldn't have? So that may be coming before you. The guy's from Canada, he's already back in Canada, so that's coming down the pike. Secondly, Beachside Parks, again, the City Manager suggested we have some. We're tearing down a water tower that makes a great piece of property. It's right next to Long Street Elementary. I would ask that you look at that. And also the property underneath the Seabreeze Bridge for public parks. There are several people behind me for volleyball. I brought this up several months ago. I would ask you to listen to them. It's a great location. And Pace came before you, or will come before you. They came before the county council. The county had some issues with the fundraising. Be aware of what happened at the county before they come before you and know what the problems that the county found with the funding. And lastly, the building on Beach Street. I've had several people ask me, is it a good idea? Why are we doing it? To me, it's a great idea. I don't want to lose eleven million bucks. Okay? The idea of grabbing that particular building seemed important because it was next to county property. It allows the county and the city to do more with that location. So I'm asking you to look at that again. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvester said he wasn't going to speak at this, or did you want to speak? Okay, you're waving, okay. And then our next speaker, I'm having trouble reading this handwriting, is it Joseph Anthony? About the City Island volleyball? And on deck is Tyler Gunderson.
Hello, everyone. Small typo in the name, my name is Jordan Austin. I am the co-organizer for the Daytona Beach Volleyball Club. We are a group of four hundred and fifty-five currently members who play at City Island Park six days a week. There are six different events that go on six days. I host three of those days. And we currently have an issue of large attendances and not enough area to play. On Wednesdays and Fridays, which I host, which are the beginner, intermediate days, we've been having between thirty and fifty people sign up every Wednesday and Friday. On a volleyball court that allows eight people, unfortunately, it causes a big line. And not a lot of people are getting a lot of playtime and it hinders being able to advance in the sport as well. I just started playing about two years ago. I love it. It's been a huge impact on my life getting into this group. The, the issue is going to be that moving forward, we just don't have enough space. More courts would be pretty much essential. The other courts in Daytona Beach are mostly beachside. And a lot of those are very hard to park at. And also are a lot of times filled with tourists, kids, things like that, which make it very hard to organize a group. We're a very passionate group who really enjoy being out there. But the issue is just going to be a number of people. And I feel like City Island, that opposite side from the ballpark, could be used for a lot more recreation, as well as tennis and stuff like that as well, which used to be on the opposite side at City Island there. So a lot of us came out tonight from playing volleyball to kind of show our, you know, need of, of extra courts and stuff like that. So, and after the meeting, we're going to go back to playing, to playing volleyball. So it's, it's really something that we really enjoy doing. And also, the other issue I had was restrooms. I know the park closes at sundown, but our lights stay on till eleven P.M. We play from six-thirty to eleven P.M., Wednesday and Friday. I hold going to the bathroom from six to eleven P.M. because the bathrooms are locked at five P.M. There's a lot of ladies that go out as well who have to hold or go to the gas station down the street. So maybe figuring out in the future some sort of public restroom option or a key to where we could have access to the restrooms that are already on City Island Park would be fantastic as well. But thank you, everyone, for listening and, yeah.
And I'm sorry, sir, did you state your name, do you have any of your address for the record?
My name is Jordan Austin.
And your address?
Oh, my address? Two thirty-seven Bob White Court.
Bob White Court, okay, thank you.
Yep, you got it.
No, I want to say, I want to say I think this is awesome because we always talk about this particular age group. We want to keep them here in Daytona Beach. We talk about bright flight, which is our brightest people going to college and then leaving because they have nothing to do. And I don't think that this group is really asking a whole lot. I hope that we can maybe have some more conversations about this with the Commission because I would love to see, I would love to see your wishes come true here. Because I love to see it. I love to see all of you here, you young people here advocating for yourself. I love to see that you're not out doing things that you shouldn't be doing. You just want to play volleyball. So I'm with you.
Our next speaker is Tyler Gunderson and on deck is, is it Roger Deverney?
Please, please state your name and your address.
My name is Tyler Gunderson. I live in eleven sixty-two Ashland Court. Ashland Court. It's right by the Dairy Queen.
Dairy Queen?
Yeah.
Port Orange Dairy Queen?
Yeah, it's about the Prines.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thank you for all coming today. Sorry that I'm sandy. Like we said before, we were playing volleyball. By the way, you're amazing, love you. Really appreciate what you said for us. It really hit heart here because I started playing in the Daytona Beach volleyball clubs three months back. Never played volleyball before. And the community here is amazing. I felt very welcomed, I felt very cared for. They give me tips all the time. And I really would not like it waiting in that line for so long. So if we could get another court, that would be great. But I also have one more concern because I love, I heard rumors that our ballpark is going to be renovated. It's going to have different things added to it. But they might be tearing down the tennis court. And I just want to be able to know. I don't really care about tennis, I'm sorry, tennis people. But I don't want the volleyball court to go down. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me out.
Our next speaker is Roger and is it Deverno? Is there Roger? That lives in Ormond Beach, thirty-nine? He left?
I think he had to leave, yeah.
Okay. Our next speaker is Albert Bensik and on deck is Austin Williams.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, my name's Albert Bensik. I live eight forty-first Street, Port Orange. We, there is like three different points here. I hate sitting here. I'm like listening to people gripe and complain and moan about a whole bunch of assets, facets of the city. And it sounds like it's really irritating. Anyways, because I, I don't want people to read complaints to me. But there's quite a few benefits to the volleyball. a few benefits to the volleyball club that we have. First thing is that intersectionality, it's not just people that are local residents here or people that move from out of state, we have people that are international people as well. We have people from Southeast Asia, we have people from Northern Africa, we have people from Italy, Europe, South America, and it's basically where our generation is looking to hang out. The older generation, such as 80s, 60s, 70s, or people born before that, you guys had a lot of league sports. Oh, sorry. At that age, they had a lot of league sports. At this age, our generation tends to have not much access to third spaces. Third spaces is, you've got health at home, you've got health at work, but the health in the third space, pretty much today, everybody requires that you spend money everywhere that you go. You have to go to Starbucks and you have to spend cash. Six dollars a cup of coffee, right? Some people make only about 12 dollars an hour. So we catch a lot of those people, and what we receive from that is free camaraderie. I have notes on my arm, this is great. I want to speak from my experience, but I share a lot of experience as well. Look, I, I was somebody that was supposed to be a failed, I was a failed cadet that was gonna be going in the infantry for Embry-Riddle. I ended up staying in Daytona Beach. The only thing that's just about kept me here was this. I also had a bout of alcoholism, and there's an internal struggle that we have to deal with, like getting out of that, and that's aiming high and aiming up. You look at me like my father, he looks skeptical, and he's an approval maker, not an approval seeker. Quite often, that means that I have to grow as somebody into my community, and where I have an opportunity to contribute back to, very similar as you guys have grown in y'all lives, too. This place and the Daytona Beach Volley Club has given me the opportunity to do that. Last thing is moral rudder, you said that about the whole City Island Park area. When I first came here and I drove over that bridge and I only saw the library, it was very dry, and it was just, because I come from out of state, right? That's where a lot of people seem to be moving from. City Island looked very barren, you know, now that I have an idea of like where to go and who to meet and all that other stuff. It's, it brings a certain aliveness. Anyways, yeah, that's time, so appreciate it.
Thank you. And next time, when you come to speak, if you ask, we will make sure to give you some paper to, to write on, so you don't have to write. Our next speaker is Austin Williams, and on deck is Raymond Woodrow?
Hi. Hi, my name's Austin Williams, 132 Powell Boulevard, over there by Indigo. And I'm a local tennis instructor. I teach at Daytona Beach Shores on their clay courts, and I teach at Central Park in Ormond. And I used to teach at Florida Tennis Center in Daytona Beach. I volunteered taught at Derbyshire Park. And here, kind of boomeranging off of Roberto, we really lack tennis courts in Daytona. There's Derbyshire, which is free and public, but those courts are arguably insufficient, the fences on the side are too close to run down balls on the side, and there's also some bowls in the court, so you can trip as you're moving through the baseline. And then there's Schneble Park, which is in disrepair, the net is too low, there's only one court. And then, there's Florida Tennis Center, which is about 60, 65 dollars a month, which really excludes a large part of the population, people who don't want to drive that far, and people who don't have 65 dollars a month to spend on sports. And so, I first wanted to just point out how scarce tennis courts are, public tennis courts are. There's also three courts at Embry-Riddle, which are public, but it's a lot of people competing for three courts. And so if we are to get new courts, I wanted to make a big suggestion. For clay courts, the Olympics were just played on clay. It's safer for older people, safer for younger people. So clay is great, the Olympics were on clay. Also, if, if they're free, I just think it'll include a larger demographic. So, that's, that's basically it. I just, we, we really, the tennis community could really benefit from clay courts, and we don't have very much to choose from right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, is it Raymond Woodrow? And on deck is Luke Pascal.
Raymond Woody.
Woody, okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Raymond Woody Jr., residence 1103 Cabot Cliff Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Definitely feel honored, you know, to be before you all tonight. I'm the head football coach at Bethune-Cookman University, and also a proud BCU alum. I am here today to extend our gratitude to the Commissioners, Mayor Henry, and the city of Daytona for their continued support and generous donations that have and will continue to have an immense impact on our program. With the dedication and unwavering support from the city and city personnel, we will be able to further nurture and uplift our student athletes in the classroom and on the field and within our community. On behalf of our football program, our football student athletes, and the broader BCU family, we thank you again. We look forward to seeing you at all our games, and before I sit down, I wanted to introduce our two student athletes, Amir Hodgek, he's actually a representation of the offense, 3.5 GPA, and then Raymond Woody III, representing the defense, as well as 3.5 GPA.
Good evening, how y'all doing? I just wanted to, I'm a graduate transfer from Cal Berkeley, I just wanted to express gratitude to you guys for donating. One thing I'll say, like, just coming from Cookman, I went to Cal Berkeley, I went to Florida State, like, the people, it's not different. The biggest difference is the resources and things like that, and with you guys helping, I feel like it's helping us recruit, it's helping us just be better and like be one of those so-called big schools, like, and we really appreciate you guys.
How y'all doing, everybody? Yeah, I'm a junior, I'm from Berlin, Germany, actually, so I'm an international student. And on behalf of the team, we cannot thank you enough for this generous donation, with this great donation, you will open up a path for us to reach the caliber to be a championship team, and thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Good luck, y'all have a great season.
Coach? Our final speaker tonight is Luke Pascal.
She had a question.
How we looking?
She wants to know how you looking on every day except for when you play the Rattlers? She wants to know how you looking.
How you looking, coach?
We're getting ready for University of South Florida, first game, August 31st, looking good, national television game, so, don't miss that.
Thank you, Mr. Pascal.
Hello, I'm Luke Pascal, and I'm part of the Embry-Riddle tennis team here, and I've actually been a Daytona Beach resident since I was, can remember. And we used to play junior team tennis at the City Island complex, and now they're basically unplayable. And I remember we used to have like 30 to 50 people in the stands watching our junior team tennis matches, and it would attract people, and everybody would go out there and play, and like they said as well, we would love to have some clay courts out there, it would attract a lot of possible customers as well, for businesses that can open up in that area, and that's really important as well. And I just think that it would benefit the community as well, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, before we go, I want to give you a quick rundown of what I can remember. Campbell, C, Palm Terrace, C, West Side, C, Champion, B, Hinson, B, Mainland, B, Beachside, B. What's your school? Long Street, B, Seabreeze, woo-woo, A. Did I miss any? Did I miss any schools? Tomoka's in Ormond Beach, Ormond Beach Middle, my school, first time in 33 years, A school. Congratulations to all of our students, and congratulations to all of Daytona Beach for all that you do. Let's continue to aspire to be great. Good night.